Now, we need the town moderator to pull another article.
P.
P. And after P will be?
Q and R.
Q and R.
We always use the highest form of technology, as you can see. I'm actually speaking on P. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, you got through a couple.
Yep.
Bob has asked me to moderate this because he has a client that has an easement that we'll be discussing, so I will be moderating Articles P, Q, and R. The floor will entertain a motion for Article P. Yes, Madam Town Clerk. Selectman Campbell moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant, on behalf of the town, on such terms and conditions as it deems appropriate, a permanent easement in, on, and, and over a portion of Bear Skin Neck Road, a public way, which portion is shown more particularly on a plan entitled Mortgage Inspection Plan located in 11 Bear Skin Neck, Rockport, prepared by North Shore Survey Corp., dated February 4, 2017, and on file with the Town Clerk, to the owners of the property located at 11 Bear Skin Neck Road, which benefited property is shown on Assessors Map 36, Lot 51, and described in deeds recorded with the Essex South District Registry of Deeds in Book 8694, on Page 330, said easement to be granted for the purpose of allowing said owners to retain the overhanging bay window and stairs and landing located over and on the town property. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Bob?
Robert Fiznick, 40 Jordans Lane, and as much as I've been trying to, I can't live on my moderator's salary of $120 a year, so I've been forced to go into private practice. And I'm representing a client in this matter, but it is something that has come up a few times. I think we have a plot plan to show you and a photograph. So there's the photograph. This is Zirkus on Bear Skin Neck, and it was owned by the Marrengers for decades. And, uh, great place. My mother used to love to shop there, and they had it on the market for several years. And as happened on other occasions on Bear Skin Neck, found a buyer, and if you go back to the plot plan, you will see that the building occupies virtually the entire lot, except there's a little tiny picture window in the front that overhangs what the survey says is Bear Skin Neck. And in the back, half the stairs and a little bit of a landing also encroach. And so, one of the things that is a problem and has been identified in the Bluestone Report and in the, by the Planning Board, is our businesses sort of have difficulties and have certain issues that prevent them from having transfers as smoothly as possible, and this is one of them. So luckily, this transaction occurred in August, and we were able to get this on the warrant for this meeting, and I'm going to ask you, ask you, the town, to grant a permanent easement, allowing these conditions to continue. Now, Article R is going to ask to short-circuit that a little bit to help in the business community, but these types of easements occur all over Bear Skin Neck and other places in the business community, and sometimes for private landowners as well. So to make this transaction close, we asked the town, and the town granted a temporary license to allow these structures to overhang, and that was enough to allow the transaction to occur. In the past, it hasn't been, and people have lost, I've had a client lose over $100,000 because the buyer didn't want to buy before they actually owned all of their property, and so the transaction didn't take place. These happen a lot. Who knows, really, I mean, we, you know, the surveys back 150 years ago when Bear Skin Neck was subdivided, you know, we're talking a matter of a couple of inches or a foot, but that's the issue, and so I'm here to ask the town to grant a permanent easement for these structures.
All right. You need a microphone.
Denise Donnelly, 72 Pigeon Hill Street. I'm a little confused. Are we voting on the specific easement, or, because you said "these structures," I just want to understand what we're voting on.
Well, there are structures in the front and the back of the building. We are talking only about this property right now and nothing else. But I was just leading you forward a little bit. I've come up with what I hope is a fix for this in the future, and that is Article R. But of course, right now, we're just talking about Article P.
Article P. Any other questions? Is somebody over here? No? Toby.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I'm delighted to hear that the transaction has occurred, so we're not spiting anyone if we say no to it. Dick Marrenger served the town for umpteen years on the Board of Health, and it, you know, is presented as being something in the benefit of a business community. In fact, it's favoring the interests, all of these things, and more particularly Article R, which is umpteen times worse, favoring the interests of real estate lawyers, real estate agents, who find their business snagged at the last moment when they discover these things, and the occasional person who, in all innocence, finds themselves guilty of the encroachments. It's favoring their interests over the interests of the town. Now, it's currently board policy, but it's not policy, it's only practice, I discovered that this past year, this past week, to grant the easements for $1. So, at present, we are getting money. Losing my papers and my wits as well. We're getting for this one, where are we? 11 Bear Skin Neck. On February 14, 2007, the town signed a lease agreement with the Marrengers for the encroachment for $250 a year, and we're now going to be asked to part with it. The Board of Selectmen will make haste to deny it for $1, that being the current board policy, if we approve this. If we were spiting the Marrenger sale, I would say that we should look the other way, perhaps, and put aside the town's interest in favor of those who were going to suffer if we didn't indulge them, but that's not the case here. And there's no excuse for giving away for $1, something we're getting $250 a year for now, and Article R, which was dreamed up to go on with this, is umpteen times worse.
Any other discussion? I sense that you're ready to vote. All those in favor, you want to take out your clickers. Oh, this requires a two-thirds vote? You can still use them? Yeah. Okay, all those, what was the motion? What's the motion? In the motion, Article P, as it was read, click 1 or yes on your clickers. Those opposed, 2, or B. Voting started? All right, stop. All those in favor, 72 percent. Those against, 28 percent. Two-thirds? It's declared a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Four to forty. I don't have the motion. So the next one is, next we'll go to, do you want to do it, Bob? Do you want to do the next one? Article R? Article Q. The Chair will entertain a motion on Article Q.
Yes, Madam Town Clerk. Aaron Battistelli moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire, on behalf of the town, by purchase gift and/or eminent domain, and on such terms and conditions as the Selectmen deem appropriate, permanent easements in, on, and under portions of the property located at 6971 Broadway, which portions are shown on wall maintenance easement Area A and construction access easement Area B on a plan entitled Parker Street Retaining Wall Easement Plan, prepared by Gateway Consultants, Inc., dated November 1, 2016, and on file with the Town Clerk, for the purpose of allowing the town to construct, improve, inspect, maintain, repair, and/or replace the Parker Street retaining wall.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Would you like me to?
Yeah.
Okay. There is a retaining wall on the back of the property with the address of Broadway that holds up the end of Parker Street, but it's on private property partially, and without permission to go around to keep it in good repair, it jeopardizes the stability of Parker Street.
Do you understand? Any other questions regarding that?
Yes, they're offering it to us, yes.
Yep.
If I'm, Aaron Battistelli, Board of Selectmen. It's the property that is the old, the Twin Light Bottling property, correct?
Yeah.
Pierce Sears, yeah, owns it.
Okay, I sense, did you want to speak? No? Since you're ready to vote, I'm going to use our clickers. This is authorizing the Board of Selectmen to acquire, on behalf of the town, the portion of property located at 69 to 71 Broadway for a wall maintenance easement Area A and a construction easement, as well as construct, improve, inspect, maintain, repair, and/or replace the Parker Street retaining wall. All those in favor, press A or 1. All those against, press 2 or B. Polling started. Open? Polling's closed, and there's your results. 93. We needed two-thirds majority, obviously here, 93 percent for, or 137 against, 10. So it passes by more than two-thirds. Now we'll go on to Article R.
Yes, Madam Town Clerk. Mrs. Wilkinson moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant easements, without further town meeting approval, to the record owners of real property on and over town-owned property, upon such terms and conditions as it may deem appropriate, provided, however, that prior to making a grant of such easement, the Board of Selectmen shall determine the easement to be of an inconsequential or de minimis nature, meaning, one, there is a currently existing encroachment onto town property, two, there are no negative financial impacts to the town as determined by vote of the Finance Committee, and three, there are no foreseeable long-range planning impacts as a result of granting such easements as determined by a vote of the Planning Board, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute instruments or take such other actions as may be necessary to effectuate the vote taken hereunder.
Moved in second. Bob?
Robert Fiznick, 40 Jordans Lane. So two of the things that I'm passionate about and concerned about for the town, one, I want us to continue to have a thriving business community, and, two, I want us to have a population. I want us to be able to have real estate sales. I want young families to move in, and I don't want any artificial impediments to such things. And so, as I explained to you a few articles ago, we've had situations, I've presented them before this meeting, where I've asked the town to grant what I'm going to call inconsequential or de minimis easements, and our town meeting only meets twice a year, and so if somebody wanted to buy a house or, you know, buy a building on Bear Skin Neck, and it happens to be on Monday, then they have to wait until six months from now to get that easement, and that changes the equation on a lot of these transactions. And so I tried to come up with something, and I tried to take into account some of the concerns that citizens such as Toby might have about when is it appropriate to do so, and what safeguards exist to make sure that these things don't happen willy-nilly. So if you look at this one, requires that anybody seeking to get one of these easements without coming to town meeting has to go before the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee has to meet and say that there are no negative financial implications to the town, and the Planning Board has to meet and determine that there's no foreseeable long-range planning impacts as a result of granting these easements. And only if all of these conditions are positive could the Board of Selectmen be authorized to grant an inconsequential or de minimis type of easement. And again, this is just to keep commerce flowing in this town and not to put any artificial impediments to our growth and continuing viability for our business community. So I urge the support of this. Thank you.
Anyone would like to speak to this? Toby.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. You might suppose that the Board of Selectmen know more about easements and encroachments than we, the town meeting, know. That might or not be true, but supposing it is true that they know better, that is not a reason to give over control of these matters to the Board of Selectmen. I'd offer you the example of the budget. In Articles 5 and 6, we voted 30-plus million dollars to operate the town. We did that at the direction of the Finance Committee. It's the Finance Committee and Linda Sanders who put together the budget, and there's not the slightest doubt that the Finance Committee knows vastly more about the budget than all of the rest of us put together. I'll venture to say that there's not one person in this room who would agree to turning over the vote on the budget to the Finance Committee, leaving out the town meeting. It's the same principle here. You need experts for a functioning democracy, you need an informed electorate, and then you need the vote. Here, the Board of Selectmen are trying to deprive the town meeting of the vote. In case you feel inclined to trust the Board of Selectmen, I would remind you of what took place here at the fall town meeting. I'm referring to Article J on that warrant. That was to grant one of these easements for an encroachment onto town property from property at 7 through 11 Old Harbor Road on Bear Skin Neck. The Board of Selectmen voted to support the easement. I asked at that meeting what we were going to get for the easement. My question was not answered, most unfortunate because it might have affected the outcome of the vote. I got the answer to my question at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting. It's board policy to grant the easements for $1. I was informed this past week that there is no such board policy, but it is board practice to grant the easements for $1, a distinction that is no difference. This is significant, that case, because in that case, we gave away what could have been three parking spaces on Bear Skin Neck from now to eternity for $1 at the direction of the Board of Selectmen. And now, the Board of Selectmen to the town meeting, just trust us. You have got to be kidding. It is not a question of just trust us at this point. There are the conditions, 1, 2, 3, the checks and balances in place, and they're excellent, all of them. There ought to be a fourth one that would require the Board of Selectmen to get an appraisal from a professional real estate appraiser as to the value of the encroachment, so that we would be getting a proper amount of money for it. I don't know whether the town meeting could bind the Selectmen to such an appraisal, or whether, you know, it's simply up to them. In any case, it's a mistake, even with the conditions in place, because if the Board of Selectmen are doing their job properly, they've gone through the conditions, 1, 2, 3, and 4, before bringing any of these proposals here to us for our vote. So, we get the benefit of the expertise, we get the vote as well, we get to have our cake and eat it too. I've got more. Secrets to reveal. I asked Debbie Powers, the Board of Selectmen's secretary, to look into the existing encroachments, and it turns out, we're now getting money for them, real money, or what you might call real money. Here's a one-year lease for 15 South Road on Bear Skin Neck, annual rent 200. One-year lease on T-Warf from 2000, 200. One-year lease on Dock Square, and this one was a mass, also described as T-Warf, it can't be both, from 91, 200, at $500. 711 Old Harbor Road, the Sale Loft, and that was for 7116 to 7122, at an annual rate of $50. That's the one that we gave away at the fall town meeting for $1. Will the Finance Committee please tell us why it's better to receive $1 once than $50 a year from now till doomsday? And 5 Bear Skin Neck, debt lease, annual rent from 2006, 250 dollars.
Toby, finish up, please.
The point of it all, if you turn to Page 7 and read the moderator's good advice, if I can find Page 7, yes, is it in the balance best interest of all? If it is designed to benefit a small group of special interests while taking advantage of others, work for its defeat. Well, I'm working, or at least blathering. At any rate, this is for the benefit of the real estate agents and the real estate brokers whose sales are fouled up, and the very rare person who finds that they have these encroachments, it's not for the benefit of the town of Rockport. It's altogether a mistake.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Eric?
Eric Hutchins, 45 Pools Lane. I'm sure we probably have dozens, if not probably well over 100 of these small infractions on town property of all varying sizes. It's an issue that's always been there, will continue to be there for years. I have to admit, I've looked at this for a while leading up to town meeting, and I think the, I don't think this is the way to address this. I believe that, I don't think even Board of Selectmen want this. They may say they want it. Why would, why would the town not want to have a more transparent process on transferring our public resources to private entities without a more transparent process? We want more transparent government, not less. Now, when I saw this, actually, I actually very much liked the things that were written in here for conditions. We should probably be doing those already for transfer easements. The Planning Board and the Concom, the Board of Selectmen and others ought to be looking at these before we do a transfer and actually get a report on these. So if anything, I think we should actually be doing more reconnaissance and still sticking with our town meeting on the transfer of a public resource to private entities that are typically promoted, as we're hearing, by private. This is not anti-development. This is just the checks and balances that I'm stressing.
Herman Lilia, 6 Bay Ridge Lane. I sit on the Planning Board as well, and I see a need for this kind of a process. I don't see anything wrong with it. I think that you would help yourself if, in fact, there was some sort of estimation of the value of that piece of property as a part of this. So I would offer an amendment that that be made as an addition to this motion, that be, there an estimate of the value of it, and if the value is, I would suggest, below $1,000, that this process go through, but that, in fact, that evaluation be a cost to the owner.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? So the amendment would mean that 1,000, if the land or the easement was worth more than $1,000, then we would have an appraisal done to determine how much it's worth? Is that what you're saying? What?
No, what I'm saying is that if it's over, if it's over $1,000, then the process that's currently in place remains in place. If it's under $1,000, $1,000 or under, then, in fact, it could go through, as is being suggested, that the Finance Committee, the Selectmen, and the Planning Board review it.
So, under $1,000, we would just?
Use this new process.
How would, yeah, how would you know how much it's worth?
You have to have an appraisal.
For every easement that we have in town?
I, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, so the motion is that we, every easement in town is appraised to determine its worth, and anything over $1,000, we?
No, I'm really suggesting that if you want to impose the new process, you have to have an appraisement, an evaluation of the easement. It's only if you want to put this, if you want to go by this new policy.
And then you said if it's over a certain amount, we have a certain method, and if it's under the $1,000, we go forward with what this motion does.
That's true, but you still get, you still have a determination that it is under $1,000. If it's over $1,000, then it comes before the town at the town meeting.
So any easement coming before the Board of Selectmen, they would need to determine the value of the easement before making a decision?
If you were going to give it away. That's what I'm getting at.
If you're going to?
Okay, this is a process by which you're transferring a piece of land to this owner. So there's the mechanism that's being suggested.
I don't think we're transferring the land, we're giving them an easement on the land.
Well, effectively, effectively, you're giving them the land.
Sarah?
Sarah Wilkinson. I just want to, I think this has gotten way more complicated than it was intended. This article is meant to actually, I know some of, some people are going to be shocked, but it's actually meant to help residents, and the only time it ever will come into effect is when people are trying to sell a piece of property. These easements have been in existence for years and years and years, and it's only when they go to sell the property that it becomes an issue. If it triggers an appraisal, that's an additional, I think like $600, I just had appraisals done, right, which would be to the seller, which is an additional cost. The point that was made a few speakers ago of, we're trying to be more transparent, that always gets me when people say that. Board of Selectmen meetings are always public, unless it's an executive session in something like this, unless there was a reason, would always be public, and we would always welcome people to come and people to comment them. They're advertised, and you could always come and speak. This is meant so that when people in town who happen to own some of the dozens of pieces of property with a sliver or a staircase or a window that goes over town property don't have to wait, simply don't have to wait for a town meeting.
I fully understand that. All I'm trying to do is get this passed, quite frankly, and I'm trying to give you a mechanism to allow more people to support it, because as Toby has already said, there are those pieces of property that have been transferred, and the true value of those pieces of property has perhaps not been realized. So I'm saying to you, if you, if you want this to be passed, perhaps you can add this additional amendment.
The amendment is?
The amendment is that if there is an evaluation would be performed, if the value is under $1,000, then the new policy as proposed would go ahead. If the value was over $2,000, over $1,000, then it must come back and be a part of...
To town meeting?
Town meeting.
Okay, now we're only talking about the amendment to the motion. So we're only talking about what Mr. Lilia just said, which is, anything over $1,000 has to come back to town meeting, any under $1,000, we'll proceed with this measure. Okay? Go ahead.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. I oppose both the amendment and the motion on the basis of our earlier discussion on the importance of our public right of way. As we've all seen on numerous footpaths that have previously labeled as footpaths to the ocean, we now encounter private property signs. These private property signs might only cover one or two feet, certainly below $1,000 in value. I'd hate to find out later when I went to go and volunteer, because I, we have a $3,000 budget for maintaining our public rights of way, that I wasn't allowed on the property because it's no longer ours, because the homeowner was granted an easement over one of these public pathways. I want those matters to go to the Town Board to be resolved.
Thank you. Mel?
Mel Michaels, 22 Landmark Lane. We're muddying the waters. Let's deal with the issue as it is. And think about this, by the way, when somebody has a piece of property and they can't sell it because they don't own a piece of it, and they want it right away, and they have to wait three or four months, as Mr. Visnick said, we, and the house goes down in value? We're losing money, because now the real estate tax drops. Remember that. I think this can be very helpful. I think we have to, I have to trust the boards to make the right decision, and we can't be paranoid about it. So I would urge you to vote for the original article.
Ann Patrice.
This is a question about the amendment. $1,000 of value to whom? $1,000 in town income? $1,000 real estate value that year at the moment the assessment was made?
As appraised. They asked for an appraiser.
Oh, so it's the appraised value of the actual land?
Yes. All right, now we're, we've, okay. Well, first of all, we have to move the amendment.
Just, here's how I worded the amendment, to add a fourth condition to the de minimis definition, that the easement be appraised and have a value of less than $1,000.
Now, we've asked to stop discussion, no more discussion, we've asked to move the question. This requires, how many? Four?
Just to amend the majority.
No, first we need to, someone just asked to move the question. We need two-thirds vote, just to move the question. All those in favor, are we ready? Yep. Press one on your clicker. All those in favor of ending debate.
Just moving the question.
We're just moving the question.
No further debate.
No further debate. One, to move the question as well as the amendment, and two, to continue discussion. Okay, I sense, stop the polling. All right, we are moving the amendment. No more discussion, the amendment as written.
To add fourth criteria to the, to the de minimis definition as follows. Be approved and must, easement be appraised and must have value of less than $1,000.
Pat, a question?
Question?
A question. In Mr. Lilia's statement, he said that the cost of that would be the homeowner's responsibility or the applicant? Do we need that information in this motion?
No.
Do we need it?
Mr. Lilia, was your intent to have the homeowner pay for the appraisal?
In my limited experience, I would say that if somebody wants to buy the piece of property, it could, the homeowner could say, "You do it," or the homeowner could do it for the buyer. I mean, to specify that, I think is unnecessary.
But you're stating that it will, okay. Not part of the motion. Okay. So, now we're moving the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, press one on your clickers. All those opposed, press two. All right, we'll close the polls. So what do we need for the amendment? Just a majority? So, 71 to 65, so the motion...
The amendment carries.
The amendment carries. Thank you. Now we will vote on the main motion as amended. And this is a two-thirds vote. So the main motion with the fourth contingency for this article, do you want me to read it again, or are we all set? Anybody want it read again?
No.
We don't need a quorum for a specific town meeting in our bylaws. There is no quorum.
Yes.
Yes. All those in...
The whole town meeting, repeat what the...
The, the motion is.
I'm not sure what the...
Okay, this is Article R. We'll go back to the, can we go back to the article for just one minute? The motion. All right, I'm, move, I hope it's here, R. It was moved and seconded that the Board of Selectmen, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant easements without further town meeting approval, to the record owners of real property on and over town-owned property, upon such terms and conditions as it may deem appropriate, provided however that prior to making a grant of such easement, the Board of Selectmen shall determine the easement to be an inconsequential or de minimis nature, meaning, one, there is a current existing encroachment onto town property, two, there are no negative financial impacts to the town as determined by vote of the Finance Committee, three, there are no foreseeable long-range planning impacts as a result of granting such easements, and four...
And four, the easement will be appraised and must have a value of less than $1,000.
As determined by vote of the Planning Board and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute instruments or take such other actions as may be necessary to effectuate the vote taken here under. All those in favor of the motion, press one. Oh, we got to put it back. Been a long day. All those in favor of the motion, press one. All those opposed of the motion, press two. I'll give you a few seconds. The polls are closed. So the vote is fifty...
It fails.
So the motion fails. We did not get a two-thirds vote. Point of order.
On all, on the, on the Article W, did that have to pass by a two-thirds motion, or just majority?
Two-thirds.
It did not pass by two-thirds.
Which one? The amendment?
She's asking about Article W.
I, the amendment needed to pass by...
I'm sorry, I'm talking, I have a point of order, because I'm confused.
Article W.
Article W, did that have to pass by a two-third vote or majority?
Oh, Article W, I thought we were talking about this one. All right. Bob, I turn my chair over to you.
So what's after that?
Your next one?
H. After H, we will have...
I need the motion.
Wait, point of order, I have a question. H will be followed... Mr. Visnick, sorry. By Article F, yes. That screen reads Article R motion, 77 percent, that's more than...
It's not more than two-thirds.
Am I not reading that right? Can you switch it? Fifty-five. Oh, 77 votes, I'm sorry. That's okay.
So it was H, and then what? Okay. Who was making the motion for?
H Hotel will be followed by F for Foxtrot.
I don't have my motion, oh. Do you have H there for the motion? Oh. It said no motion in there, so I don't know who to make it for.
Okay.
Originally no motion, but we didn't want you to get out too early, so we'll have a motion. Good.
Mr. Moderator, if the select people, excuse me, I don't know who was assigned to this, but, okay, Mr. Moderator, select person Sheedy moves to establish a parking benefit district in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 22A and 1/2, which would establish a parking benefit district in which the parking revenues collected therein will be segregated in whole or in part, in a special fund undesignated for use in the Rockport Cultural District, which location is depicted on a map entitled Rockport Cultural District, and dated March 7, 2017, and on file with the town clerk for the purposes listed in General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 22A, and that up to $1,000 of parking meter revenue collected therein shall be designated to the parking benefit district for FY18. What?
Ten thousand.
What did I say? Oh, pardon me. Do you want me to read it over the...
No.
Thank you.
We're fine. All right, anyone want to discuss this? Moved and seconded. Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frederick Tar, 154 Main Street. I just have a clarification that I wish. This is tagging up the cultural district. We've had a cultural district for about five years now, supposedly. A Tuesday night Selectmen's meeting, however, a group came in wanting a cultural district, and according to the papers they submitted, a commitment according to scale of what they presented, a commitment of over $1 million to a cultural district for promotion. Now, is that new cultural district going to be funded for a million dollars, or is this just going to go to the existing cultural district?
Mr. Moderator?
Sarah Wilkinson. At last Tuesday night Selectmen's meeting, the cultural district, I believe most of the members of the Steering Committee were there, and the Board of Selectmen approved the cultural district applying for a redesignation. Every five years, you have to apply to the state for a redesignation of the cultural district. There was no, there was no dollar amount, there was, there was no, there was no dollar amount associated with it. The only thing we discussed was, maybe Mr. Tar's confusion is that they did discuss other local communities, and the fact that, for example, Salem, I think contributes like $600,000, Province Town, other communities contribute several hundred thousand dollars to their cultural districts. And our cultural district actually operates on a, let's just say, less than a shoestring budget.
Thank you.
Laura Halliwell, High Street. Just, I'm unclear of whether the parking benefit district is the same area as the cultural district, or if the parking benefit district is the whole town.
Mr. Moderator, you want me to continue? The statute that was enacted in November states that a parking meter benefit district can be established geographically where the majority of the parking meters are in the town. I suppose larger cities could have more than one, but we only have one, really, area with a lot of parking meters in it. And it happens to be the same area that the cultural district also exists. So, it's, it's only that area with the most parking meters, there's no more than one.
So they're the same. The cultural district is the same as the parking meter district. Yes, ma'am.
Sue Kohler, 5 High Street, Chair of the Rockport Cultural District. Just as a point of information, the cultural district also has received state monies. $5,000 in 2016, that was matched by private contributions. We also received a challenge grant this year from a local businessman for $10,000. We've received monies from the Inns of Rockport for $3,000. So the, so this is an attempt at a private-public collaboration.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait for a microphone.
Mary Francis, 67 High Street. Question to the moderator. Are you able to set another time to finish this town meeting, or are we going to be here until it's done?
I believe unless we have a curfew of some sort, we're going to be here until it's done.
Really? Okay.
We're getting really close. We're wearing people down.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. When Sue Arsenal was interviewed by the Board of Selectmen Tuesday night, she was asked about the purpose of the district, and it's to lure cultural tourists. That was her phrase. I'm tempted to jeer, but I shouldn't jeer. Cultural tourists as opposed to Philistine tourists, as opposed to ordinary tourists whom we voted in Article 5 to advertise, to lure to the town. So now we're being asked all over again to lure tourists to the town. That's the purpose of the district. And as for the purpose of the money, Linda Sanders said, when she was making defense of this to the Finance Committee, who objected to the 12 percent but agreed to the 10,000, she said that they were going to come back for more, you know, more in another year and more altogether. And the purpose of the money is to pay the director. You should know that when the cultural district was first approved five years ago, we were told, I asked the rude question, whether it was going to cost the town any money. And at the time, the answer was no. And so it continued for a number of years, and now the state grant money has dried up, and now we're expected to pay. And as you've been warned, Salem paid $600,000, and Province Town $19 million, and so forth. So you can see where we're headed with this. There's another aspect to it that should concern the Finance Committee, the DPW Commissioners, and the police. The parking revenues go into a parking fund, which at the moment is in disorder, because it was never properly authorized. But the parking fund pays for police cruisers, which are a big-ticket item and a necessity, okay? And it also could pay for road improvements. The Department of Revenue has just come forward with new standards about what the money from a parking district can be used for, and, you know, stretching the wording, which is hopelessly vague in the state's, you know, determination, you could use it for a cultural district, you could also use it for repairing the roads, and there's never enough money for repairing the roads. And there's never enough money for repairing the roads. We get money from Chapter Ninety, and it's never enough. And we could use this money instead of raise and appropriate out of your taxes to fix the roads. So that's something to consider. Both that and the police cruisers come out of the parking fund. Do you want to spend it on frivolities?
Mr. Moderator, I just want to correct one thing that Mr. Arsenean said. He said the same thing at the Selectmen's meeting, that I said there would be more money needed in the future. That is incorrect. I, I don't recall saying any such thing, nor do members of the Finance Committee remember hearing it. So there was no promise to come for more money. We just, I think maybe the confusion is that I said perhaps in future years, but not more. You know?
Yeah. Don Campbell, Board of Selectmen. Earlier today, Toby had alluded to the, the use of funds for the advertising that the town does. And now we're talking about funds that the cultural district has, or we'd like to designate for that purpose. Rockport is, is, look at it as an ecosystem. Everything is interdependent. The residents depend on businesses, businesses depend on residents. Sometimes a motion, or sometimes an article will support a business, sometime it will support a resident. But it's all interdependent, and all should be supported. This is a good expenditure of funds. I, I would say a great expenditure of funds. Under the guidance of Sue and the Rockport Cultural District, you couldn't have a better stewardess at the helm on this. And I think she does a great job and is very discerning in how she spends those funds and what she does. So I urge everybody to support this.
You've heard the motion. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor will press one. All those opposed will press two. We'll have six seconds. Go. Motion carries. We move on to Article F. Which will be followed by... I don't know. Y. F and then Y. Yep. And then Y goes before X or something.
Except that Y was going to come...
All right, Article F.
X was going to come before Y, you announced.
Right.
So, so is it FX and Y?
Well, we're doing F and then X and then Y.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, Select Person Mina Shidi moves that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $30,000 to a property valuations fund for the purposes of Article F as printed in the warrant and on page fifty-four of the town meeting voters booklet.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move on to X.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Laura Evans of the Ad hoc Water Committee moves that the town resolve, that the people of the town of Rockport declare that access to clean and affordable water is essential for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, both for the health of the people and for the ecological systems which support human and natural communities. And therefore, that it is the right belonging to the people of the town of Rockport whose rights are threatened when public water systems, which guarantee that access is controlled by a corporate few, rather than, as is currently the case, that the water supply is controlled by our community itself. And further declare that privatization of the public water infrastructure constitutes a usurpation of our democratic right to make decisions about the infrastructure, and that we are duty-bound under the Massachusetts Constitution to prohibit such action in that public water systems and the infrastructure necessary for distribution of public water supplies within the town of Rockport shall be owned by the town or a municipal authority of the town, held as part of the public trust for the residents of Rockport and the ecosystems within the town of Rockport. And that it shall be unlawful for public water systems and/or public water system infrastructures within Rockport to be owned by any entity other than the town unless a proposed transfer of ownership or other financial interest in that system or infrastructure is submitted to a referendum vote and approved by town meeting.
And Laura, if, in your, in your presentation, if you want to talk about Y at the same time, we'll vote them separately, but whatever moves this along more quickly, be water over the dam.
This is Laura Evans, seventy-seven High Street. This is my second article about the status quo, and I hope that this one goes a little more amicably than the first one. That's a joke, guys. This, what, what this article is all about is essentially just, just concretizing the status quo. The DPW's doing a great job managing our water. Chris Martin is wonderful. Joe Parisi's doing fine. And I don't know of any threat or, or companies wanting to come in and privatize the water supply, but it just seems like, you know, it's a good proactive thing to do. And if at some point in time, it does make sense to privatize our water supply or its infrastructure, we have to vote on it. So I think this is a really common sense thing. And I basically, the Ad hoc Water Committee got this language largely from a, an ordinance that Gloucester passed about five years ago. And so their city council voted it in, and it just seems like good, good housekeeping to me. The Ad hoc Water Committee, if we could combine both of those, I think we'd be fine.
Sure. We'll vote them separately with our new clickers.
Ad hoc Water Committee is volunteer committee. It's the longest-standing committee in town, reports to town meeting. This last year, there have been three of us. We looked at a couple of things. We confirmed that the water quality assessment study that was mandated after nine-one-one, the Selectmen assured us that Rockport is in compliance with that, and it's being updated. In, in June, a citizen notified us and said that it looked like herbicide was being sprayed around the wellheads. So we looked at those, got some pictures. It turns out that the DPW was using a citrus-based herbicide. Board of Health looked at it, determined that it was all safe and fine. Going forward, we've got a new member who belongs to the Rockport Garden Club, who wants to alter our mission so that we do more in the area of education, conserve, and preserve. And I think that's wonderful, and we'd like to keep working. We meet once a month, on last Tuesday of the month at five o'clock. And if anybody would like to join up, it's a really fun committee, and we thank you for the opportunity. Okay?
So we're voting on Y first. And that is the non-binding resolution part of this. No, it isn't.
No, it's...
That's the...
It's to receive the report we just received.
Oh, yeah, it's X. We're voting on X, which is, we're voting on X, yeah. Want to speak on X? Of course.
Right, I'm Mr. Gasbag. Anyway, on Article X, certainly their hearts are in the right place, and privatization is, you know, always a swindle at the public expense. There's probably some exception to prove the rule. But if the DPW Commissioners grew horns and tails and were possessed by the devil, they could not do the things that the petitioners are suggesting. It takes a two-thirds vote of the town meeting to sell any town property, and I've spoken with Darren Klein, and if you're selling watersheds, that not only takes a two-thirds vote of the town meeting, it requires the approval of the legislature and the signature of the governor. So they're slaying mythical dragons here.
Okay.
A curiosity, how do the...
Please state your name for the record.
Herman Lilian, Sixth Bay Ridge Lane. How did the author of this motion envision a piece of property such as the Steel Derrick Association, which conceptually is part of the water supply of Rockport despite the fact that it's seldom used, but it has been used. The pipe is there. The pipe is there. And they could in fact disband, sell that piece of property on, would they then be impinged in some way and not be allowed to sell that property based on the words here? Or how does all this go together?
This is just a resolution to essentially say that water is good. And, and other things.
Yes. Eric Hutchins, forty-five Coles Lane. Just one clarification. This isn't, I believe, all about transfer of land. It's infrastructure, which is also buildings, machinery. So I don't know how that applies, but don't want it to get tunnel vision. It's not just, it appears not to be just about land.
You've heard the motion under Article X. All those in favor, press one on their voting clicker. And all those opposed, press no. And we will have seven seconds. Go. Stop. See how we did? Motion carries. Under Article Y, I think we've already gotten the report, right? Did we, is there anything further for Article Y?
Yes, Mr....
You don't have to read the report.
Mr. Moderator extends the committee somewhat.
It also extends the committee, so. Any discussion there? Yes.
Alan McNolan, Eighteenth Story Street. Something that is not told to you in the report that you should all be aware of, that Chinese industrial waste is dumped in your drinking water in the form of sodium fluoride, which comes in fifty-pound bags with skull and crossbones on it, because the Board of Health believes that will help you in your teeth. What it doesn't point out is that if I drink, if you drink one glass of water a day and I drink ten glasses of water a day, I'm getting ten times the dose of sodium fluoride in the drinking water that you are. And less than fifty percent of the communities in Massachusetts, including the city of Worcester, do not put sodium fluoride in their drinking water. You should be aware of that. Chinese industrial waste in fifty-pound Chinese bags put in your drinking water.
Anything further? You've heard the motion. All those in favor, we'll keep going with the clickers. Press one. Opposed, press two. And we'll have six seconds. Ready, go. Ready, stop. Great. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Laura, to you and your committee.